Adoption of the agenda, Monsieur Lalland. It is resolved that the agenda be adopted with the following changes: that Item 9.1 sub B be placed under Item 7.4 sub B, and that Item 9.1 A be placed under Item 7.4 sub B. I second this. Seconded all those in favor? Carried disclosures of peculiar interests? None? I might have one, Monsieur Mayor. At Item 7.3? I was... 7.3, yes. Fine, then. So, we're going to cross on the other side of the street now and hold the regular meeting of council. But before we do that, we'll just tackle Item 7.3. Well, Mrs. Simard has a conflict of interest that she has declared with regard to Item 7.3. So, you want to push forward Items A and B under 7.3? And the other one is the interest of peculiar interests, where Mrs. Simard declared a conflict of interest. I wish to place, by the way, 9.1 sub B and 9.1 sub A to 7.2. Everyone has noted this and everyone's voted positively concerning the changes in the proposed agenda, in the agenda. Yes, all right, that's fine. All those in favor? Carried, then, that's fine. Disclosure of peculiar interests? Yes, we've dealt with that, yes. Councilor Zant and Councilor Simard have both declared conflicts of interest. Let's cross the street and go on to the Jean-Marc Lallonde Arena to discuss this matter. We're going to have a question period now and we'll hear the presentation first concerning this motion to be debated. Well, tonight, so we're not going to have the question period before.
So that many questions are going to be answered after the presentation is made. After that, we'll have a few, not all you guys, coming up to the mic to ask questions or explanation or anything. Okay, because we've got a long council meeting after, so. So Monsieur Boucher, vous voulez-vous commencer?
Would you like to start off, Monsieur Boucher? Yes, good evening. To start off with, as you're able to readily notice, we're in the process of renovations. If you need to go to the washroom downstairs, there are some washroom facilities set up for people.
Is on renovations, so there is washrooms, public washrooms downstairs if needed. Bonsoir, Monsieur Mayor.
So, good evening, Monsieur Mayor and councilors and members of public.
Counselors and to the public.
Now, this evening, we'll be dealing with a summary of pertinent points concerning the study that was conducted on two main municipal buildings.
Summary of building suitability assessment review for two main buildings. Je, Pierre Boucher.
I, Pierre Boucher, Director of Community Services, will make a presentation of the story behind the Jean-Marc Lallonde Arena since the closing of ice-related sports activities in the spring 1991.
Services will present the project history of the Jean-Marc Lallonde Arena since the ice sports shutdown in spring of 2011.
Now, following this, Monsieur Pierre Jollicar, who's the main driver behind the study, will give us the results behind all of this. Monsieur Jollicar has a lot of years of experience and expertise in operation of buildings as well as management of assets and has assisted community services in this particular matter.
The principal person in charge of the study will present a brief resume of the results of the buildings. Monsieur Jollicar has many years of experience in building operation and asset management and has assisted the department in this assignment. Madame Ellen Collier.
Mrs. Ellen Collier, who is the Chief Administrative Officer of the City of Clarence and Rockland, will help us throughout this presentation and will elaborate amongst other things concerning financial matters.
For the City of Clarence Rockland will assist us along the presentation and will elaborate inter alia at the financial sector of the presentation.
Now, the focus of this exercise is to obtain a clear directive on behalf of the Town Council concerning the future use of the present buildings.
This exercise is to get a clear mandate from the municipal council regarding the future vocation of the actual buildings.
Now, let's go on at present to this presentation. We studied the relevancy of the following buildings, the Arena Jean-Marc Lallonde, including the Paul-Guillaud-Lond Room located at 1450 Avenue du Parc. We've also included a recreation garage
at the 2815 Chamberlain Street.
I'll be starting off with the recommendations stemming from the service, or the department, if you wish, that council authorizes the department to hire a multidisciplinary or to commission a multidisciplinary study that will lead to a conceptual preliminary plan in consultation with the users and members of the public to repurpose the Jean-Marc Lallonde Arena, cost of $110,000, funded 50% by a grant and 50% building reserve fund, approved in the 2018 budget.
The department to undertake discussion with the health center in effort to reach an agreement that clarifies the cost and space sharing arrangement as well as the terms and conditions of use for a successful multi-use operation of the Jean-Marc Lallonde Arena.
And the last recommendation states as follows that the council directs staff to come up with a report on conclusions to consider in future budgets enacted by the city. Now, let me go on to the project history of the project. Now, in 2011, council closed use of the ice surface following the construction of the Clarence Rockland Arena. In 2012, the service proceeded to a call for tenders to determine whether or not a private business or company would like to take over the management of the building. No offers were retained. In 2013, the service received a mandate to proceed with the sale of the building. In 2014, following the swearing-in of this current municipal council, one of the first resolutions that the service brought to the existing council's attention was to stop the sale process of the building. And in 2017, we evaluated the possibilities for the building with the help of an external firm. And the report of the suitability of buildings were forwarded to council during the course of the summer of 2017. Let me introduce you to Monsieur Pierre Jollicar to deal with the Building Sustainability Assessment Study that was conducted. Good evening, Pierre, good evening, one and all. I would much prefer to keep my notes, because I do have notes concerning this presentation, so. Good morning, or good evening, should have been. Now, the purpose of our review was to establish the global sustainability of those buildings to cater to the current needs of those services offered to the clients.
How are those two buildings suitable in terms of responding to current needs, in terms of the program delivery needs?
Why do we do this? Well, because ordinarily, during the course of events, it's because the original purpose is not inclusive anymore. The arena is not an arena per se, because we don't have any ice surface.
It's largely been triggered by some decisions, some movements, some evolution of what's happened to that structure. And in this case, the Jean-Marc Lallonde Arena, for example, was built as an arena, but no longer really is performing the ice functions that were normally there in the past. The same thing with the Chamberlain Building, the Batzema Chamberlain.
The Chamberlain Building beforehand was a main seat of action for, let's say, an administration center. And moreover, we've seen what it does. Today, we've transformed this building to cater to other needs. And to what extent does it meet other needs? Now, we examined when we were commissioned to make a study of such a type, we're looking at the conception of the design, the level of use, and the condition of the building, the operational costs, and the future capital costs.
Look at a building in this context is to look at its design, its original design, but its current applicability. We look at its utilization and we also look at what we call affordability. Affordability on the basis of its operating costs as well as the future capital costs that the municipality would incur.
Now, when we're talking about the arena of the community center, we're taking a look at the design plan. Now, we have an installation here that has one ice surface only. Ordinarily, these days, we note developments in which we add two additional ice surfaces to take advantage of the manpower costs, efficiency, and other things, and at the same time, to meet the needs of the participants when we're dealing with the number and the size of dressing rooms and accessibility, and moreover, the energy conservation.
And how well is that facility performing in relation to what are current issues as well related to that function? Typically, today, we're not seeing too many one-ice-surface installations. Most of the one-ice installations in the east sector have become multi-ice facilities. For example, Jean-Baptiste-Padmé Arena is now a fourplex. There's talk of turning the Blackburn-Hamlet single pad facility into a twin pad. So you're seeing some issues around how others are responding to that issue.
So, concerning the utilization. On utilization, now, the official plan did not identify any requirements when increasing ice time. And the analysis of ice time, since we've taken a look at statistics, shows that we have sufficient capacity. And moreover, as I mentioned, there's the impact of the new ice surfaces that were built in the eastern part of the sector.
The master plan identified no requirement to reopen this arena for that purpose. The city has shown over the survey period, it has sufficient ice time capacity, even on prime time, and is also the impact of what we're seeing now as the impact of new ice surfaces in the east quadrant of this area.
Now, when we take a look at the utilization of the arena floor operations, the utilization rate is akin to 27% usage of the available rooms. And the master plan has not identified any discrepancies of the need to pursue sports activities that the community had discussed when this study was started up. There was a matter of curling, squash, tennis, and soccer. Pierre indicated to me that there were changes recently brought to this. Now, I don't quite recall exactly the name of the sport, but there was a type of deck tennis paddle ball. Yes, paddle ball, yes. And the good old times, I was playing paddle tennis. I remember that type of sport now.
27% of the available hours are being used. Master plan has not identified a shortcoming or a current tangible need to pursue alternate sports activities that were promoted during the review of the master plan, such as curling and squash, indoor soccer, and the like.
The Paul-Guillaud-Lond Hall, well, the utilization rate is 19% of the available hours. And the master plan has indicated no planning efforts that should be undertaken to provide additional community hall space.
20% usage of the available hours. The master plan has indicated no planning efforts should be undertaken to provide additional community hall space.
Now, concerning the garage this time, the recreational, the department garage, the design. In this case, we're not talking directly about unlimited space. We're dealing with very limited space to support operations. The difficulty for a group that really holds workshops, we're talking here about detached parts, work treatment. We've encountered difficulties in this building to meet those needs. Parking facilities is insufficient. We've also indicated in our report that warehousing and the culling of certain assets, especially for the food bank, well, is akin to a great discrepancy in the lack of space to support clients and needs. And the need that we need the second floor for the thrift store also causes difficulty during the hours of operation.
Garage facility on Chamberlain is very limited in terms of space to support the operations of a parks operations unit. There is a significant lack of onsite parking there. The warehousing and sorting of food in support of the food bank is very difficult. And there's a lack of private space to support the clients. And last but not least, of course, is the access to the second floor, where the thrift store is located, is a stairs-only access and it's very difficult to move things up and down on a regular basis. From a utilization.
Now, the recreation garage, and the key word, leads to operations conflicts with operations at the health center. And the recreational garage is not the proper term for it. This is sort of like a workshop or a warehouse is the word that I'd like us to use. It's not a garage in the public work sense that we have in mind. It's a space that operates from 9:00 to 5:00, 7:00 to 5:00, from Monday to Friday, basically. And it's mostly viewed as a center from which employees make use of resources, take those resources, and take their steps to offer services. However, it's still one that is in conflict with the centric area, because the traffic there gives cause for concern. There's a lot of traffic during the morning and the afternoon when volunteers have to step onsite or clients have to get onsite, and at the same time, cars travel by there. The thrift store operates 18 hours per week and the food bank operates on a five-hour-per-week basis, but it takes at least three times that amount of time to allow volunteers to prepare, to prepare those areas to receive clients. The time it takes to obtain food, to place food on the shelves and to have that food ready for clients requires a lot from the volunteers.
Or conflicts, its operations conflict with what's going on on the site. There is a lot of traffic flow that happens at times. It can be difficult. There's a lack of serious parking, so it makes it difficult for both the volunteers and staff. The thrift store operates 18 hours per week, the food bank five hours per week. It is a warehousing-type approach, but I should caution, as I just said in français, the volunteers are spending inordinate amount of time in preparation for those 18 hours and five hours. It's probably triple that in order to prepare to accept the clients.
So, with regard to health and safety.
Inspection perform in certain evaluation.
In this case, we performed inspections and evaluations of contents and equipment. Pierre's team performed those inspections. He indicated there were other inspections carried out. And on the 4th of June, the department will submit to council a report based on immediate needs.
About some particular areas within both of these facilities. And there is a report on immediate requirements that will go to council on June the 4th. So the options are... Now, there were other options, but the key options that we wanted to focus on for tonight are these two. So, the first option, the status quo.
The status quo. Now, in this case, the arena, well, the cement floor and community hall will remain the same. There would be no changes. Under the status quo plan, things remain the same. That means amongst other things that, given this status quo situation, we need to resolve certain problems and issues with regard to the condition of the buildings. And Helen will go into greater details. There are some works to be performed, repair work on the roof. And there are elements of health and safety concerning the Jean-Marc Lallonde Arena that need to be addressed. Amongst other things, there are requirements that will be implemented concerning the conformity as to accessibility needs. Now, this installation, as you know, is not like this one here. There are no elevators, you see. So to have this room or this building running on a long-term basis, we need to address those discrepancies.
It means, basically, the arena continues to function as follows. It will not be an ice facility, because there is no need for ice, but it would remain in terms of supporting the floor-based activities that it has now. The Paul-Guillaud-Lond Community Hall would remain as well and would continue to be in support of what use it currently has now, albeit their limited uses. Nevertheless, there are certain deficiencies that are in place now that we have to address in terms of its renewal, life cycle renewal of certain key elements of the building, notably the roof and other elements of health and safety. And of course, the long-term plan is... Not long-term, but there is a need within the next five years to look at accessibility issues, particularly if you need to use the upstairs hall. There isn't an elevator that supports the function of the hall, as this one has here, for example.
So, option two. Option two, repurposes the arena. That's the one that's recommended. And in doing so, to take a look at whether or not we're able to reconsider, if you have two buildings that in this case do not cater all that well to the needs of the community, do we have... Is there an advantage that lies behind making use of factors of one and amalgamate them in the general purpose and use of others? That's option number two. In this case, a part of the floor space of the arena would be dedicated to support the workshop and the recreational or the recreations garage. And the arena, the arena floor, would still be there. Those clients that make use of the arena floor would still be accommodated. Two-thirds of the 200-foot-long and 85-feet-wide floor would meet the needs. And we would meet the accessibility requirements in two buildings and not just one. And according to us, we'd be increasing the use of the buildings and to draw away from the use of the Chamberlain Building, to do everything here and to transfer it there, basically. And hopefully, we'll be keeping the focus on enhancing a multidisciplinary room. With the room that's upstairs, we can, outside the box, with the use of outside the box, thinking we'd be able to address certain elements with regard to repurposing the community hall.
It's not a garage. It's basically an operations center. One-third of the floor space in the arena, the arena floor would be used to create this. We're taking advantage of areas in the building that are underutilized, underneath bleachers and the like. And there is two-thirds of the floor remaining, which would allow for the existing clientele that uses the floor to continue to use the floor, because we're talking about two-thirds of an 85-by-200-foot-length facility. Most of the activities would be able to be accommodated under that arrangement. And in this case, meeting the accessibility requirements would be for the municipality to focus in one facility to allow for all that to take place. So I'll pass the microphone now to Helen, who can give you now a perspective on that. Was he Helen?
Now, here's Helen to give you an overview concerning the financial aspects of this project. Thank you, Pierre. Yes, there would be a question, Monsieur Jollicar, for you. I just have a question concerning the percentage, the percentage of the use made of the cement floor. Yes, where did you take your statistics from? We had the statistics stemming from 2016. Well, I'd like to answer this right away. These figures don't come from me but from Community Services Department. At present, the arena hall, the arena at present, well, was occupied 22% of the time, 61% in 2016, 51% in 2017. In 2018, in four months, it was used 87 times with a mean average of 71%. That's far and away from 27%. I'll have Pierre explain the way in which they came about to conduct this study. Well, you're saying it's 19% with regard to the Lallonde Hall. Now, according to the figures supplied by them, 36% in 2015, 33% in 2016, and 41% in 2017. And 2018, if things follow the same trend, it's going to be 41%. It's a great difference with what you're proposing. Can I answer the question, Monsieur Mayor? Yes, well, you see, the statistics that Monsieur Lallonde has stated are quite true, but they are statistics dealing with the days of use but not the number of hours of use as opposed to the number of accessible hours. For example, I have 100 hours to rent out. I only rent out 19 hours. I only have 19% of those of the time rented with regard to this installation. Now, you asked me to come up with a graph as to the number of days that are used. There are some days that are used to the tune of one and a half hours per day and other days that are used to the tune of one hour per day. That's where the difference of the statistics lie. Now, Monsieur Jollicar dealt with the statistics related to the number of accessible hours and not the number of hours. The other question that I do have, Monsieur Jollicar, is this. You stated that it occupies about two-thirds of the cement floor surface. I don't know where you obtained those figures, because according to the plans you've presented, you're removing 75 feet from the boards to the blue line. The skating rink does not measure 180, but 200. If I can answer this question, the 70-foot alluded to starts from the end part of the arena and not the center. There's a space in between the end part of the arena and the ice itself. There will still remain 135 feet worth of ice skating surface, minimum. It's a preliminary plan here and not a conceptual concrete plan that I presented. But from the blue line, you're removing 75 feet. If I rely on your plans, well, there's a garage floor. No, he's talking about cement surfaces. His 75-foot starts from the outside door, right. Well, if you're dealing with the garage floor, you have to add an additional six to eight additional feet that you'll be taking up. Well, the six to eight feet is included in the 70-foot alluded to earlier, but because when we'll be taking over possession of the cement surface, we'll be removing the boards in this section and shorten this area to about 130 or 35, or 135-foot area. Well, you told me that you started from the board to the line, to the blue line. Well, we said that it was more or less from the boards to the blue line. Any other questions? Thank you, Pierre. And Pierre, both Pierre's, thank you.
I'm just going to present very briefly the numbers to you, because I know everyone's anxious to ask questions. So, just so everyone can understand what the costs are. For the Jean-Marc Lallonde Arena, it costs $105,000. it costs $105,000 right now, today, to keep the arena running as it is. To keep the garage operation running and the help center running, it's $39,000. And those costs are the costs that cover electricity, heat, et cetera. Under the two options that we presented to you, option number one, the status quo, meaning that we would continue operating just as we are now, we do no changes. There are still monies that need to be spent on the building. So under repairs for the arena, we must do roof repairs. We have another fire alarm system, which is budgeted this year to be repaired. And we have health and safety items, which we're finalizing the costs to present to council at the next council meeting. And that's what's included in the $525,000. The $750,000 number in the status quo column is for accessibility requirements. Those requirements aren't required today, but certainly within the next five years, the city will be required under the Accessibility Act of Ontario to install an elevator and to correct the washrooms, both on the first floor and the second floor, to allow accessible washrooms for everybody. At the recreation facility for the garage and the food cupboard and the help center, there's $130,000 of repairs and health and safety concerns that must be addressed. And then we are anticipating, in the status quo environment, if we stay as is, we have to spend half a million dollars to put in an elevator, fix washrooms, and to make the doors accessible so they have the button to push, to open for the wheelchairs to enter. So in the status quo proposal, although we don't need all the money this year, it's 1.9 million. In option two, which was the recommended option in the report that was presented to council a few weeks ago, we have the same costs for the obvious immediate repairs, 750 for the accessibility. 550 would be to modify the arena, as we had discussed, and that brings us to 1.8 million. All of these costs must be understood. They are what we call Class D estimates, so we haven't gone out and got a detailed professional estimate or gone to tender. And the cost in option two, should we sell the building on Chamberlain, the proceeds of the sale of that building could reduce the 1.8 million. But this evening, the important thing is we're bringing to council what the recommendation one was, which was to ask council to allow us to spend $110,000 to look at what the best options are for the two buildings. So to that, we'll open it to questions, and we'll go through the mayor to answer questions.
Thank you. So we'll begin with those questions from the public. We'll start with the questions, so we'll start with the questions, I'm sorry, stemming from council, and then we'll go on to the public. Point of order, Mr. Mayor. Would it be possible to determine the percentage of municipality? Well, Mr. Jardicar made his presentation in bilingual fashion. Hold on a minute. Yes, we'd like to have a French version of what was said. Well, for the arena, the running costs are akin to $105,000 per year, and for the garage, it's synonymous with $39,000 per year. That's the cost of electricity, cleaning, snow clearing. Those are costs that need to be met each and every year. Now, under option, option one, status quo for the arena, we need $525,000 to repair the roof, the fire alarm system, and to revamp all health and safety items to meet with the requirements. Also, option A, under the status quo, states $560,000 cash outlay to install elevators, to build accessibility washroom facilities, and so on and so forth. Now, the accessibility costs are not necessarily to be spent this year, or met this year, but next year at least. Now, concerning the garage, expenditure-wise, we're dealing here with $130,000 to offset the health and safety risks in existence at present, and operational costs. And accessibility to the garage requires the installation of an elevator, automatic doors, and the upgrade of washroom facilities for a total cost of $1,905,000. Now, all costs in this instance leads to a Class D estimate. It's a first estimate concerning costs. Now, dealing with option two, that's recommended, we're dealing here with the same costs applicable to the arena, the operational costs, as well as accessibility needs. Also, there's a recommendation to modify the arena amenities, $550,000, that would be earmarked to divide the floor space and accommodate recreational-related operations. All in all, we're dealing with a $1,825,000 spending plan now. It's possible to meet those costs compensated by the sale of the Chamberlain Garage. Thank you. And now for questions. Councilor Zant, your first question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Boucher, we've spoken on many occasions in the past, and you stated that we needed a garage. It was not necessarily a garage that was the most pressing item on our agenda. We spoke last, earlier on, of options, for example, purchase an industrial tempo-type shelter, and as they did in Clarence Creek, and to install it in Clarence Creek that would become a hub for all municipal vehicles. When we're talking about the 19 or the 29%, be it your figures or Mr. Lalonde's figures, I believe it still portrays the situation as being a very deplorable one. We've never resorted to any publicity for those services that we receive, and I know why. That's because in 2011, and it's not your fault, and it's not your department's fault, when we stopped making ice for that, for that building, we never came up with plans to repurpose the building. We knew it was up for sale. Thank you for your applause, folks, but we know that we went throughout this exercise, and everyone knows where we're at right now, but we're, at this point, we're building a new community center. In about 10 years, would cost us approximately three times the price it would cost us to renovate the room that we have at present. That's why I really think that we need a community center. We know that the city can double in population in the next 20 to 30 years. It's called upon to do so, and to get rid of a building that has the sole potential of being converted into a community center would not be in the best interests of citizens in the city at present. We do have cadets present, pickleball, representatives, ball hockey reps. There are many groups that make use of this hall, as well as the upstairs part of the hall, that could be certainly fixed up to be able to be rented out quite easily. Councilor Grimald. Well, firstly, thank you for, one and all, for having attended this meeting. I know that you have the future of this building, well, you keep it close to your heart, and I really appreciate, appreciate the option, financial option brought forth by the community centers to maximize the use of the building. Mr. Jardicar, Mr. Jardicar, yes, made the following comments. We're taking a look at current needs, but I think that we have to adopt a much broader vision as to what will look like in about 15 or 20 years from now, and what our needs will be. And one word that comes to mind is surface. We'll be able, we need to be able to organize activities to meet our future needs. There are many options. I could come up with one here, but there will be many offered tonight. To run a workshop and such, or an operation in such, in this area, in our, in our building, we need to take a look at other institutions right now. We need to transform, you know, cement surfaces that are not made use of right now, that could be converted to multi-purpose uses. The tempo garage is another one. And there's an option here that we did not look at. Now, before taking a decision, it's such an important decision here tonight, I believe that we should take a look at performing minimal repairs on the Chamberlain Garage and to ensure that our employers have a place to eat, have a shower area, and if community services people work on the outside, there's no use for them to take their shower elsewhere. Even if the department needs those facilities, the community services department is that one. My suggestion is to come up with better options, or the best option, by taking a look at our needs in 15 or 20 years from now. Cadet activities will increase, as well as pickleball activities, and others will increase. And if we make this appealing, I guarantee that this building will certainly meet more of the requirements of the community than it does at present. Let's repair, let's offer a decent space for our employees to work in. Let me give you an example. Let's keep our community hall. Let's bring our vehicles here in Clarence Creek, and the outside, where the Zaboni is located at, has, is two floors high. If we say to people, we'll take up one foot in cement floor space, we'll meet the needs of those in need in our community, and we'll remove a lot of social, social needs. Let's be creative. Let's take a look at other options. We don't have enough options before us right now to allow me to vote in favor of this. I'd just like to mention the following, Mr. Grimald. There's an arena in Hoxbury that was repurposed. I took a look at what they did. It was quite fantastic. It's nice to look at. It's a very nice change, worthwhile change, for an arena that has no ice surface left. It's a good place to start off with, Mrs. Chouagnier. I know that many groups are not aware that this is a multi-sports complex. We're still referring to it as an arena. Many think that this is a temporary facility, and it's going to be turned over into an arena. The first thing that we should need is that we should change the moniker or the name of this institution. The community hall is in pitiful condition. We need a functional kitchen area, and that would stimulate the interests of many groups that might rent this space for longer, especially if there's food served. I know also that we have a half million dollars to spend. We have to make a choice here. Do we spend to, this money to accommodate the help center and reduce arena space, or do we take this same $500,000 amount and repurpose it to perform the work needed to be performed on the garage? So we're spending one way or the other. However, if we repair the garage, but we wind up with two functional buildings instead of only one, while we're, we're, come out winners, we have to determine whether we want this investment in, under one roof geared to one building. But with regard to costs, the costs remain the same. The way in which we do things have changed, or has changed since 2016, we should meet those groups that make use of the arena once again. It would be important to advertise when this meeting would be held, and to meet with the designers coming up with the conceptual plans to reflect the actual vision and needs, because many groups make use of the space that have not used it two years ago, that did not use it two years ago. Thank you. You may speak into the mic. So what we do have here is this, the Community Services Department hired an external firm to take a look at breathing new life in the arena, to breathe a new life in the arena community center, arena slash community center complex. And the recommendation that we have is to mix up garage operations, or the operations center, with that of recreational center operations or community center operations. Everyone here is in agreement that this is a bad idea. Now, after, following your petition, your public comments, and your presence here tonight, I can affirm with great certainty that this council would reject this recommendation. We can thank Mr. Jean-Marc Lalonde for this. He knows what citizens want and know how to rally them around a good common cause. We learned two things tonight. Number, one, we learned two things. Don't mess with Jean-Marc Lalonde, the man with the arena. And I think that this administration should reconsider its dependence concerning reports stemming from external consultant firms. This city of Claremont and Rockland spends too much time, energy, and money to hire external consultants rather than relying on our internal consultant facilities. We should ask citizens what they wish. They're the ones that know what they want, period. So what I find unbelievable tonight is to see those people that have taken the time to meet with us. We've seen on many occasions during the course of our mandate that people appear before council to deal with roads and so on and so forth, but I do appreciate that the community makes us aware of what they need concerning this matter. Now, dealing with the arena or the Paul-Guillaudon Hall, there are no planning efforts should be put forward to add an additional community center. I'd like to know where in Rockland is a community center? Do we have a community center? So we're not talking about a supplementary hall, because there are no community halls here in Rockland. And the rate of utilization, the rate of use of the room, 19%, it's true. This is a true figure, but if we take a look at renovations to be made, we'll be spending $75,000 to repurpose the washrooms. I believe the room will be rented even more than it is at present. And if we were to do the same thing for the Paul-Guillaudon Room, which was a very nice room beforehand, people met there, and people met there often in the past, and if we continue from one year to another to put in money, if we are to keep our community hall, it would be worthwhile. All right, thank you. One of those points I'd like to make tonight is this. Mrs. Chouagnier had mentioned that the costs remain the same, even if we adopt either option one or two. Let's not forget that if we resort to option two, we sell off a building. That would reduce costs, as Mrs. Collier has alluded to. One of the options that I'd like to see implemented would be this one. Now, concerning the community hall, we know that in Rockland, there are some other available spaces that may be used to house meetings or to host weddings or some such events. We have the Knights of Columbus Hall on Giroux Street. We also have the Optimists Hall. We haven't alluded to that one, but it's also very underutilized. We also have the River Rock that offers catering services. Now, one of the options that we might possibly consider to help out community groups and those people that already have access to other rooms, as well as the Paul-Guillaudon Room, is to come up with partnerships that exist. There is one that exists in Mrs. Chouagnier's ward concerning the Bourget Community Hall. I believe the social committee, yeah, the recreational committee, I'm sorry, I'm always mistaking, mistaken in those communities. Well, the partnership of this entity helps out the city and helps out with the management costs of the community hall. This partnership exists now for many years. Pierre, how many years has it been in existence? Oh, at least 20 or 25 years now. I see. So if we come up with a type of partnership, for example, with those people that manage the hall on Giroux Street, that would offer other options to people here in Rockland and throughout the community, really, because they also, if we take a look at the management costs and operational annual costs involved of other halls, they also incur the same costs. Now, we might look... costs. Now, we might look investigating other partnerships to incite those groups to also exploit our community halls that we're managing. I believe those groups have their liquor license that we don't have at the Paul Ilalonde Room. We don't even have it here in Clarence Creek. The only place they do have it would be in Bourget, so it would offer additional options to the community. And this is something that we ought to consider when taking a decision dealing with the Jean-Marc Lalonde or the Jean-Marc Lalonde Complex Arena. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, firstly, I'd just like to I'd just like to mention the following. The Bourget Hall is a municipal hall. It belongs to the municipality and it's a different thing altogether. I'd just like to mention.
Everybody understand, the community hall in Bourget is owned by the municipality. So and it's run by an independent group.
And the Knights of Columbus Hall, I've looked into this more than once. Now, to rent it out for one evening, it costs you $980. Now, the nonprofit organizations cannot allow themselves to rent a hall at that price. I consulted the CIA. They're renting it. They're renting it at $60 when the room is available upstairs and when there's the ice rink is being used, you can't rent it out. So our nonprofit groups, well, volunteerism will lose ground here in Rockland. That's the only way to keep volunteer interested.
On the cost of the repair. The roof, no matter what you do in there, it's got to be done. It should have been done years ago. The roof is leaking and it's according to a report that I have here, we had two reports. The longer we wait, worse it's gonna be at the arena. We have to fix it. The fire alarm, no matter what you do, you need the fire alarm. Health and safety, no matter what you do, you need that.
So the roof, whatever you're contemplating to make the arena, to make whatever use you're contemplate making of the arena, there are two reports that state that the more we wait, the more it's going to cost us. The same applies to the fire alarm, health and safety issues also. Whatever we'll have there will cost us more in the future. One thing I noticed was this, however. When we take a look at those costs and the report that I have in hand that was prepared in 2010, and I'm convinced that members, not all members received this report, in 2010, it stated the following. The repairs must do. Well, the cost contemplated was $208,600 and the cost that needed to be included in that was the replacement of the kitchen hood, ventilation hood and the exhaust facilities. In English, the ventilator facilities, a few items needed to be repaired, $208,000. Item number two, $298,000 should do.
Was $586,000. So there are things in there that could have been done way back, way back. This is why we don't rent the the community hall. Just lately, a caterer came to me. He says, I called the city hall and they told me that they didn't recommend me to rent it because the washrooms are not operating properly. No kitchen, no cooler. The catering company went to another place.
So I said that very recently, a caterer consulted with me just prior to the 8th of May meeting and asked to rent the room to host a reception. And they told me not to do so because washrooms don't work properly. The kitchen facilities are in existence, in existence. The coolers don't even function. How can you rent out a room to an organization if we can't even meet the minimal safety rules and property rules? Now, I was taking a look at Mr. Jollicard's report and thank you, Councilor Grimal. You mentioned it then, you touched upon this. When we prepare a report, it's not for the media purposes. It's not for the immediate needs that we encounter, but for the future needs. And in keeping with your report, it does state the increase of the population is is ever so high each and every year and it states that we'll be needing a new arena in 10 years. It's mentioned in the report. And Leclerc, Levecq and Robichaud turn came up with a report stating that the structure is in perfect shape. So we're going to try to demolish some stands to accommodate a community services garage. And in 14 years from now, 15 years from now, we'll have to build an arena. Do you know how much it costs to build an arena these days? It's $15 million. This is, there's a $15 million price tag attached to this. Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make a correction. This was never discussed when Mr. Jollicard was involved in all of this, when we talked about the addition of arena. But it's reflected in the report. It's written black and white in the CIR report that reflects this. Well, Mr. Pierre Jollicard does not work for Fiera. I'm an independent consultant. I see. So the three firms that came up with reports, I have two here. One stemming from Levecq, Robichaud and Leclerc and one from Sierra. The third one I had not seen yet. Sierra is the one that came up with the recreation master plan. There's a distinction to be made amongst reports here. To accuse Mr. Jollicard falsely is not correct. This report was prepared for Sierra. I apologize, Mr. Jollicard. I thought the Sierra report was your report.
Responsible for the Sierra, the planning and management.
I was not involved at all.
Three report then, instead of two. The first one was in 2010, the second one 2016, and when was the other one done?
Mine was prepared in 2016, 2017 really, but we haven't seen it. Yes, it was forwarded to you in August of last year. Well, whatever. Mr. Mayor, in light of comments that we've received, you'll note that there's a petition that's going to be forwarded to us. People state quite clearly. We have need of a community hall here in Rockland. We have 15 times the number of people in Clarence Creek. And if I was told we're going to close a room in Clarence Creek, I would be opposed to it. That's the only community hall that they do have. Rockland boasts 15,000, 15,000 population. We wish to close this only hall that we have?
When we have 15 times more the population than they have here.
Another thing I noted in the Sierra report was this one here. It stated that as of 2031, 28% of the population will be 65 years or older. Now, we know at present with the pickleball activities that are ongoing, we increased the number of individuals to 90 and it's going to increase year in and year on. That's the only sport that can be offered to our taxpayers on a year-long basis.
They're saying that the population, the senior population will increase to 28%. So we need facilities to accommodate those people. Merci.
Thank you. Mr. Lalonde, I think that you and I we're over and above 65 years of age, are we not? I'm sorry. I think we've gone over the age of 65, have we not? I think so, yes. So we have to keep the facilities for us too. I'm just going to go to questions. I'd like to have names and addresses, but I just, one representative from the cadets here tonight. I don't want you in line tonight because we have another meeting to terminate or to end it tonight. I'd appreciate that one person representing each individual committees because we can't spend one hour here. We have to continue on with our meetings. The gentlemen at the back, step up to the mic, give us your name and your address, please. My address, yes, yes, of course. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm back. It's turned to the public. I would like, what's your name and your address? Philippe Lepage in Rockland. From Rockland, 134, 294. I would like to be, it to be called Domaine du Golf, but in English, it's called something else. Rockland. My presentation will be quite brief. Firstly, I'd like to congratulate this council and all those people that I heard speak tonight. And I don't know if the same rule applies when you're holding a political meeting. But there's only one presentation that left me a little back. But we need to maintain a community hall. And this warrants your applause. I'd like to congratulate you, Mr. Mayor. And the media that's at, that's present here tonight. Mr. Mayor mentioned, at least a newspaper person mentioned on behalf of the mayor, and I understood the message that was relayed to us. Thank you. So let's just give a hand to town council. Now, firstly, I'm wondering the following. I was involved 35 years in the field of education, as many others in this room here tonight, and I'd like to know. I'm just, I'm not asking a direct question because I'd like people to have the opportunity to prepare themselves beforehand. Will the ice surface at the Jean-Marc Lalonde Arena? And I'm just asking the question, will it be made, used extensively? I don't think it's in the works right now. Could it not be used or enlarged? Mr. Bouchier, let me answer you, ask you to answer this. At present, we don't have a request for a fourth ice rink. Normally, an ice rink normally will be good for about to cater to the needs of about 10,000 to 12,000 population. We have enough ice rink surface to meet the needs of 25,000 individuals. We don't have a lack of ice rink. We have supplementary hours left over because of ice rink time that has not been rented out. And since 2011, since the Clarence and Rockland Arena has been added to the mix, we've been allowed to operate much longer. Conventional arenas like this one operate seven to eight months a year on a maximum basis now. The Clarence and Rockland Arena can operate 11 to 12 months out of the year. So those new arena constructions are conceived to operate longer hours and for a longer time. Let me ask the question then, Mr. Mayor and to members of council. The ice rinks that are currently available answer to the needs of the Clarence and Rockland schools at present? I would prefer not having an answer right now because my answer would be short and sweet. I would say no. I'm not a great I'm not a sports-minded individuals, but I do have a conscience like all of you have. I have nothing against the academy, but it's not located in the downtown core or close to our schools, as is the case of the arena as opposed to the Jean-Marc Lalonde Arena. So that's about all I had to state. But, Mr. Lalonde, there's something that you didn't stated. There's publicity. We've never heard talk of any publicity. Last thing I'd like to add is this. We need to maintain our buildings. I believe that everyone's aware of this. Our buildings are in very poor shape and this building in particular, we need to make a choice in the coming years. Do we need to demolish or conserve? I hope we'll choose the conservation option instead of the demolition option. Thank you, Mr. Lavert.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, the cadet program is available to youth without cost. Even the uniform is provided. Any 12 to 18-year-old can join. Sorry. The cadet program is available to all youth without cost. Even the uniform is provided. Any 12 to 18-year-old can join, no matter their sex, gender, race, religion, ability or limitation. There's also not limited by their family's financial situation. We could not run this bilingual program without the cost effectiveness and space provided by the current arena. We use the entire arena, the canteen, the full slab, the hall, the change rooms, the offices. Every Monday night and all day on Saturdays. The arena is vital for giving Clarence Rockland's youth a safe place to develop into effective and caring citizens. Without the current space that we have, we could not operate.
The cadet program is made available to all youngsters from 12 to 18 without any associated costs. And even the uniform that I'm wearing at present is supplied by the Minister of National Defense and the Air Cadet Association. Any youngster in between 12 and 16 years of age or 18 years of age can join in regardless of their sex, age, race, gender or limitations or no one is limited by the lack of money in a, in a family context. Without the arena, it would be impossible for us to proceed with this bilingual program and to implement it. To implement this bilingual program. Now, we make use of these facilities every Monday evening. We make use of the skating rink, the upstairs room, the change rooms, as well as the offices. We need the arena. The arena is vital to afford the Clarence and Rockland youth a place where they can learn how to become responsible citizens. Thank you.
We've attended a lot of your shows or whatever and what do you want to call them? They're great shows, I'll tell you. Parades. It's a nice show anyways, but it's just great and we, we support that. We wouldn't want to lose that.
The other thing I'd like to state is this. I'd like to thank you all for having attended here tonight to show your enthusiasm concerning this arena. It's quite well appreciated and let me tell you that when people show up as you're doing tonight, it's a good thing. It's a good thing.
It's really, it's a great show to, to show us that you care and that you're here to do something about it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dan Zibb and I'm resident here in Rockland. I'd like to refer to the meeting that was held two weeks ago. And what I'm surprised by all of this is that there was no mention of the community efforts that were put forward to build the community portion of this room, of the, of the room that's located in front of the Jean-Marc Lalonde Arena. Individuals such as Mr. Le Victoire, that are more equacious than I am, and Mr. Payet, that put in a lot of effort and money in previous years. They put in effort, their effort and money to build up a community hall that is now located in the arena.
Where would be the best place to have it? Would be at the community center. There was mention of a partnership with the Knights of Columbus or the Optimists or River Rock in sharing costs. Well, why don't we take those costs and put them into our own community center? And, and the costs to deal, as was mentioned here, are, are on the rise and they would be unaffordable for a lot of people. Why hasn't the community been asked to participate in recommendations or solutions for the building? It hasn't been done. This came on as a surprise to many people a couple of weeks ago. People did it years ago. I'm sure people would do it again. The building was left to deteriorate. I was in there for the first time two weeks ago after 11 years. It's unbelievable. Why would we bring an operational center? The traffic, the parking issues to a recreational residential area with two schools, a Y MCA in close proximity? And the residents also at the last meeting complained that in the wintertime, there were vehicles early in the morning with their backup beepers going off in the middle of the night while they were getting sand and salt. So you can imagine that there will be some disruption for the, for the people living there regardless of what kind of small machinery is brought in. So I think that the utilization was never promoted. I apologize for repeating some of the things that were brought forth before, but I had made my notes before some of those people spoke. but I had made my notes before some of those people spoke. So I realize that community services are required in Rockland, but so is a community center. And I think that we would stand well to keep what we have. In closing, as a resident of Mr. Lalonde's ward, and knowing that he is retiring this year, I'd like to thank him for all his efforts over the years. And I hope that we can protect this one building that has its name.
It might be a good idea to organize a committee in the future, near future, to discuss all things done, and people, volunteers could come along to be on this committee, and we'd get the opinion of everybody, cadets included.
I agree, but what bothers me is why I wasn't in this town before? Because somebody tried to push this through.
No, I don't think so.
That's what brought this.
Well, I think, let's look at the future.
Well, yes, that's a good idea.
I'm going to allow, there are about four to five, six individuals that are in line, and we're going to have these people have their say coming up to the mic, and that's going to be it afterwards, because we have a council meeting to take care of on the other side of the street. I'd like to thank also Mrs. Jeanette Ebert. That's the lady standing up. Oh, she's the one standing up. I'd like to thank you, Mrs. Ebert. If you have something to say, you may do so. All you have to do is to step up to the mic. But we'll have this lady speak her mind. My name is Theresa Seer. I'm sorry, I have a cold. My address is 998 Moore Street. You'll have to speak closer to the mic. Theresa Seer, 998 Moore Street. I represent my parents that live close to the building that you erected, the green building, where you have important salt and sand deposits during the wintertime that are made use of during the wintertime. And it's true that they're woken up often during the wintertime. Now, is the arena an industrial zone or a recreational zone? Well, it's zoned recreational, but the salt is used for parking purposes. Well, I believe it's to clear up sidewalks. But my parents don't complain as a rule, you know. If there wasn't a cedar hedge close by their property, they could see this building. According to me, the industrial use is made of this building. This building is subject to industrial use, really. And I hope we won't see the setting up of an industrial-type temple either, because it's an eyesore. No, it would be set up here at the yard. That was my comment. Well, thank you then. Next, ma'am. Thank you for all of the great work you made with regard to this here, Mrs. Ebert. Your work is greatly appreciated. It states what needs to be taken care of. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councillors, and all Clarence and Rockland residents. My name is Jeanette Ebert, located at 3159 Salde Côte in Rockland, and I'm here tonight to forward you a 1600 signature petition, 680 online signatures that goes against a part of the Jean-Marc-Lalonde project dealing with municipal services, as well as the Centre Red project at the second floor of the arena.
I wish to preserve the concrete surface for recreational activities, as well as the hall on the second level for community events, as proven by this petition and the number of residents present in which attended an initial public meeting on this subject held on May 8, 2018. Residents in the vicinity, as well as users of the arena, have expressed various concerns with the proposed project. They include health and safety concerns regarding gas and other industrial material that would be stored in the facility, additional traffic and noise concerns, as well as potential decline in the market value of their properties. There is an increased demand in Rockland for an affordable, affordable community hall. At the May 8 meeting, it was reported that the hall rental is increasingly significant, is increasing, excuse me, significantly every year. I will not repeat the, okay. The usage of available time slot has increased from 32% in 2016 to an estimated 64% in 2018. The food bank is not in favor of the move to this location. As it is well established in its current location and would cause extreme difficulty in their operations, as reported at that meeting.
Concerning the use of the cement surface located in the arena, the reduction of the cement surface would lead to a lack of space for the organizations that make use of it, full use of it. And we need an arena to meet those needs. The city of Clarence and Rockland does not own any other multifunctional, large-scale surfaces that could operate year-round within the city of Clarence and Rockland. It is therefore quite important to conserve this surface while improving the quality of services offered.
Currently used in this facility, such as air cadets, pickleball league, members of all age, martial arts, minor lacrosse association, dance school, and many exhibitions and special events. In addition, local school boards have approached the city indicating that they require additional gymnasium space to accommodate physical activity classes in the context of growing enrollment. The arena is close to five local schools, and as such, is well positioned to function as additional gymnasium space for the local schools.
Many other organizations such as Couch en Action, Ontario Health Units, Ecoute le peuple, need the arena to function and need help from the community. Now, to close, the residents of your city are asking you to conserve, to preserve and to renovate this recreational-oriented building for the sake of our community and our youth. We need it greatly. Thank you.
I've departed right across from the Jean-Marc-Lalonde Arena. I attended the public meeting, and I was back in the beginning of May. So I met with the former general manager of Public Works at the City of Ottawa, and I think it's good for everyone to hear this, because he's actually a mentor of mine, and he's helped guide a project that I'm working on. And just over coffee, I mentioned what was going on in Rockland. And right away, his reaction, and obviously not very biased at all, he said, oh yeah, I dealt with that before. We had to retrofit a parks building, exactly what's going on here, except it's not in the community center. And the end result was basically that it ended up costing way more than what was projected. And I'm sure that they did their due diligence with their numbers. He said they would have been better off in the end to have just built a brand-new parks garage. So I found that quite interesting talking to you about that. And then I met with the current general manager of Public Works, because I'm working on a project for him. And again, over coffee, just in passing, I wanted his professional advice, what was happening in Rockland. And right away, his reaction was, no, I would never mix a municipal yard with a community center, right? You have to invest in your community center, because it's the very thread of your community. So I thought that was very interesting. I thought that was very beneficial for everyone here. I mean, these are very professional people that are dealing with these kinds of things on a regular basis. And the current general manager also said that it's no way to attract new residents to Rockland if you take away your community center, because who wants to move to a community where there really is a promotion of healthy or active lifestyle? So I thought that was a very good point by him as well. The proposal that was proposed tonight basically is trying to fit three things under one roof, right? It's just trying to solve three problems. And the end result is still saying that it's a community center, but I don't believe that's very accurate, because, you know, you're taking away, we're not too sure yet, is half the floor or a quarter of the floor. But either way, you're taking away surface area that is used by soccer. I don't know if there's soccer there yet, but ball, hockey, lacrosse, the potential for other sports there. So you take that away, nobody's really going to use that, right? Who's going to go play ball, hockey in half of a hockey arena? So in my opinion, that's the beginning of the end of the community center. Sure, you might use it for small things, but not really utilizing it to its full potential. I personally think that the city of Rockland should invest in upgrading the community center. It's in a perfect location next to schools, as was mentioned. A big park with tennis courts, baseball diamonds, a skate park. And it's really is just a beautiful spot, so I think it'd be great to invest in that and promote it even more for active and healthy living. And with that said, it's in walking distance, because if you look to the future, and obviously, the population is growing everywhere. Everybody's moving out of rural communities to go into municipalities or smaller towns, which are growing. So again, the numbers show that this is a quick solution. What was it, $1,900,000? You know, it's a great number. It looks cheap, right? But give it eight years, and then you're going to be in the exact same position of, we need a community center. Now we have to build one for what, $50 million? You have to find the land, and it will never be in the ideal location where it is now. So I mean, thinking in long term, you know, it looks good now, but residents will hurt in the long run, because you know that's coming down the pipe, that we're going to have to build a community center, because we're going to need one if you take away what it is right now, or don't invest in it. So to me, as a taxpayer, I don't want that. I don't want to see that in five years. Oh, guess what? We have to build a $30 million community center.
That's it?
I've got one more point, sorry. And for me, it's just, if I have a difficult time fathoming, like, you know, being in a growing municipality, having a limited community center, right? If the city's growing, you want to invest in the community center. And it's just hard to fathom that this is on the table, that we're actually trying to discuss fitting three things under one roof, where we should just invest in a community center, upgrade it, and promote healthy and active living for a community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I think there was about 1,600 signatures on a petition, and there's even more here, another 151.
I'm sorry, we had one brought up. Madame Ebert here, and that's the official one. And I've got it right here. I've got it right here. So you can leave it on the table. We'll put it with this one after. Or Madame, the clerk will take it there. Thank you. Yes, Madame?
Hi there. Tend Galway from Forest Hill. So from reading the first recommendation, it seems to me that $110,000 is only needed for option two, if I'm reading that right? Yes, can I get confirmation? That was my question. And I'll counter you that.
So when I read recommendation number one, the $110,000 would only be necessary for option two, but it was not included in the costs.
If you do have again, then it does drive the cost of option two pretty much equal to the cost of option one. But by all logic, if you're not spending the money on option two, isn't it available to put towards option one? So bringing the cost of option one down below one point.
Well, there was a 50% grant being given for this, so really, for the planning. For planning, Monsieur Boucher?
Yes.
The $110,000, I just wanted to clarify, it was already approved in the 2018 capital budget to allow an amount of money to go out and look at what the best options are to work on the buildings. So it wouldn't be additional funds we needed. That's why I didn't include it on the affordability slide. Okay? So it's already approved, and then we got the additional grant funding, 50%.
With option one, it's money that doesn't need to be spent, right?
Correct. So it would go towards the project, correct?
Another just very quick point, I don't know if it was considered, but there are parts of the arena that are a little bit wasted space. These stands on the east side of the building.
That's why I mentioned about Hawksbury. They took all the benches out, and they made a great job. It looks fantastic.
Okay, because even, I don't know what the square footage needs are of the health center, but they might be accommodated by that space, and that eliminates the need for $500,000. I mean, there's all sorts of.
But I think council's heard everybody, and we realize.
The community wasn't invited to give suggestions, so I don't know what you've heard for you.
Okay, no, we've heard it all. We were at the meeting too, so.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am? The last one to address council, last but not least, as they say. We're very happy to see you, Mrs. Chouagnan. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm the third-generation taxpayer here in Rockland. I would like us to conserve the arena. Now, the cement surface is only now beginning to be used to its full potential. It's true that there was no publicity surrounding this building, but given what was said tonight, things certainly will be of greater interest to the community. And each and every time there is rain, we meet at the arena. This is our community center, basically, our de facto community center. And it's sufficient to host large-scope events. It would be deplorable to let it go. The gentleman stated that he spoke to Ottawa professionals that stated that this was not a good idea. We are all ex-employees of the city of Ottawa. No, we didn't say yes. It was brought to the table, but there was not a yes that was proclaimed yet on anything. I would like you to be made aware, Mr. Mayor, this being said, that there are many, many individuals who spoke on behalf of the arena and conserving it and to put money into it. We have the petition before us stating this. I know that you know this, and I receive a lot of feedback from individuals that would like me to relay their intent. They would all like us to keep this arena. Now, would you like to defer further action or vote on those options right now? So I need someone to come up with a first resolution, Mr. Lalonde? Well, I prepared a resolution, and I'd like to circulate this resolution to all members, if I may. Well, we'd have to defeat the initial resolution before tackling Mr. Lalonde's resolution. All right then. We need a motion to defeat the initial, the initial resolution before going on. Let me just read, hold on. As a matter of procedure, Mrs. Welle, as a matter of procedure, can we rely on this resolution right away? Because there were no resolutions that were read up tonight. Well, there has nothing that has been proposed up to now, so the floor is yours. Fine then. Let me read the resolution, which is entitled "The Jean-Marc-Lalonde Conceptual Plan on 28th of May 2018, Proposed by Jean-Marc-Lalonde and Secured by Mary O'Sant. Whereas, Community Services of Clarence and Rockland request that Town Council approve the conceptual plan of the Jean-Marc-Lalonde Arena as presented in Report LO 12018-0403. And whereas, a study was commissioned and was prepared by Sierra Management Company maintaining that the Jean-Marc-Lalonde should remain functional to meet the needs of the community by offering a multifunctional operational space. And whereas, all four school boards have indicated that they needed additional space to implement recreational physical activities. And whereas, Rockland does not possess any other multifunctional, wide-ranging spaces in year-round operational. in Year-Round Operational Situation or Status. And While Maintaining the Current Level of Service Offered. And Whereas All Citizens, as Well As Nonprofit Groups Have Expressed Their Wish to Maintain the Level of Community Services and Events Offered Through the Jean-Marc Lallon Operation. Whereas Over Six Hundred Clarence and Rockland Residents Have Signed a Petition to Maintain the Community and Recreational Mission of the Jean-Marc Lallon Association, That the Municipal Council Reject the Conceptual Jean-Marc Lallon Plan as Presented in Report LO 12018-04-03. And Restore This Building So That It May Meet with Its Recreational and Community, Meet All Recreational and Community Oriented Needs." Moved by Counselor Lallon, seconded by Counselor Zant. Questions? I thought that tonight we were giving the opportunity to the public to speak to the matter and because we already received a grant of fifty percent of the oversea, or fifty percent of the costs, well, we can, we should call a committee. Well, we should create a committee afterwards. We consulted, have we consulted the people? I think we consulted the people extensively. We received a petition so that people know where we're heading. People stated that we, this arena remain as it is right now. Mr. Lallon, the only problem that I have with this is that we don't address the entire scope of the problem with this. We don't deal with what will be done with the Chamberlain Street building. That's a big part of the puzzle, big piece of the puzzle. We don't, we'll have the department come up with their recommendation. Tonight, we wished to deal with the Jean-Marc Lallon Arena matter and that's it, no more, no less. I understand that we're dealing with the Jean-Marc Lallon Arena. The department will come up with further solutions to make for the use that other buildings would be made of. Now, at present, we're dealing with the arena. If our departments are commissioned to come back with further alternatives for other uses with other buildings, that's fine. Well, I have a problem with, by not addressing both matters at the same time. Well, I'm asking a vote, one second. All those in favor of this resolution? The majority wins. So the decision has been taken. Thank you. Mrs. Chouagnan, we voted on this and the majority has won over. The department will come back with further information. Tonight, we're just giving out the information. So I'm asking you the following. We're going to cross the street now to continue on with our town council meeting. Thank you, one and all. Let's go on now to item seven point one, resolution from Mr. Jean-Marc Lallon with regard to signage for nonprofit organizations. Mr. Lallon? Yes, I'm taking a look at my documents here, thank you. Whereas some nonprofit organizations have expressed the need to make use of fixed signage that is preempted by section nine point fourteen with regards to the signage by law two thousand and fifteen dash one sixty. Be resolved that town council mandates town administration to prepare a bylaw, to amend by law two thousand and fifteen dash sixty to exclude application of section nine point one four to nonprofit organizations. Seconded by Counselor Bellanguet. Questions? All those in favor? Carry then, thank you. Item, Counselor Zant? My computer is not in full use right now, I'm sorry. Be resolved that town administration be mandated to prohibit parking on the north side of Albert Street. There are some addresses in there, but I don't believe that, that there are clearly set out. I was supposed to get back to you on that. What, you can hand me those addresses later, just for the enlightenment of all council members. We're talking about that spacing between the condo entrances. There are, there is parking allowed and there, in though, in that area, but people can't see oncoming traffic. And I'll come up with addresses to those people that are impacted and hand it to the town clerk. Yes, we'll prepare a resolution to that effect. It's the house right after and before the access. Seconded by Counselor Bellanguet. Questions? It's, it's very proper to mention this because I'm wondering, you know, that section down at the bottom of the hill from Saint Jean on, there's a paved portion there and not a sidewalk and cars parked there, yes? And I believe, Monsieur Lallon, that the bylaw that's in the process of being drafted, regulating parking in the city of Clarence and Rockland, will directly address this situation, this problem. At present, I just want to, I wish to deal with the condo entrances. Fine. All those in favor? Carry then. I believe that Counselor Grimaud had seconded, but thank you very much. Mr. Bellanguet wasn't aware that he'd seconded, that's why. Let's go on now to item seven point three. Mrs. Simard? Mr. Zant? Have a nice evening. All right, let me read it. I move the following. Be resolved that council accept that Mrs. Elaine Simard remain a member of the planning committee in spite of policy C two thousand and fifteen dash zero zero one concerning the establishment of reference, terms of reverence and appointment of members of the public for reference purposes or to sit on committees. Who had, who has generated this motion? I'm the one that did so because we received a letter from this lady. We had two options, either that she resign or that she asked remain as a functional member until the end of our term. We've, we're left with about two meetings, so. So she needs to leave until the next election? Well, she needs to remain. Well, it states that they need to be an owner, but they're not tenants? No, they're not tenants. They live in Wentover. I believe they had an office here. It's a real estate office, so. They're not the owner of the building itself, but there are other members of the committee that are tenants. Ma'am, we can still accept this. No, but it's just for future reference, you know. But the thing is that the bylaw mentions that it be a resident, but a resident can be someone who rents premises, but it's not a residence per se. But can we, you need to be a resident? A resident can be either a tenant or an owner because the bylaw states that it, this person be an owner, right? Is it, is that a provincial requirement or municipal? It's a municipal requirement. All those in favor? Carry then. Why don't you give a shout to those council members that were absent from the discussion? They can come back now. All right then. All right? So as we're waiting for them to make their way back. We have an accountant here to deal with certain issues, by the way. Let's go on to consent items. Are there any items you'd like to remove as a consent, as consent items? Counselor Grimaud or Counselor Chouagnan? Counselor Leva, would you like to read out the consent items, please? Takes me a while longer than usual. Be resolved that the following items as identified under consent items appearing on the agenda of the regular meeting of council of the twenty-third of May two thousand and eighteen be adopted. Eight point one, adoption of the minutes of the following meetings. Regular meeting of town council of the May seventh two thousand and eighteen, committee of the whole, seventh of May two thousand and eighteen, eight point two, receipt of the following minutes. Environmental advisory committee of January the eleventh. Public transit advisory committee minutes of the eighth of January two thousand, of two thousand and eighteen. Environmental committee, the eighth of July, and minor variants, committee meetings, eight point two, reception of the following minutes. The eleventh of January two thousand and seventeen, it should read to, January two thousand and eighteen, should it not? The receipt of those minutes. Two thousand and seventeen, now that's how it should read, fine. The following recommendations of the, of the following, the committee of the whole, the reimbursement of those days that were canceled for reimbursement, to accept also the resignation of Mr. Fernando Lallon as member of the advisory committee with regard to environmental matters. Eight point five, resolution to adopt tax reductions in keeping with section three fifty-seven and three fifty-eight of the Municipal Act. Eight point six, adoption of the fellow salaries paid from the twenty-fifth of March to the fifth of May, in the amount of two million, one hundred and thirty-one million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And eight point seven, resolution to declare the seventh edition of the Riviera des Outages Festival and Canada Day as being a significant event to allow that a special occasion permit be allowed by the Governor of Ontario. Seconded by Counselor Chouagnan. Fine. Item nine point two then, grants rural collectivity economic program. Counselor Lallon? Yes, Mr. Mayor? Whereas Community Services applied for grant from Ontario's Rural Economic Development, R E D, program through Ontario's Ministry of Agriculture, Food and Rural Affairs, and the project identified in the application was approved for an amount of fifty-five thousand dollars. Be resolved that council adopts a bylaw authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to sign the agreement between the city of Clarence and Rockland and the province of Ontario. Be resolved that council commits itself to pay fifty percent of the costs related to the project identified in the agreement as recommended. Seconded by Counselor Grimaud. Any questions? Mr. Mayor? I'm just taking a look at things here. At present, we're dealing with a hundred and ten thousand dollars, even though we received fifty-five thousand dollars worth of grants. This is a company that's going to tell us what to do with the arena. That's what this is all about. Mr. Boucher? If you'll allow me a comment here, the decision that you've taken at the previous meeting, I would like to address the situation to determine whether or not we are in a position to modify our request to make use of what, of the information we have to tackle the existing problems for the arena. Yes, we'll need plans and specifications for the arena. We'll need plans to oversee what needs to be done. Well, we, we need to adopt a resolution to that effect or, well, I need to have a resolution enacted. Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I phoned them up this morning. They asked me if it was going to be accepted by council or not. I told them that we were going to vote on this tonight. I think it would be awkward to say no, thereby compelling us to spend seventy thousand dollars from our own pockets. Well, we know what to do right now. Painting, work to be done on the roof, the ventilation system and health and safety expenditures to be made to revamp the situation. It's like spending money for nothing. I'd rather lose fifty-five thousand dollars worth of grants and save seventy-five, a needless seventy-five, fifty-five thousand dollars worth of expenditures. Do you expect our department to come up with plans and specifications? Well, I don't see the use of following, of having plans specifications in this matter. Counselor Chouagnan, I believe it's important for us to go ahead with this because if we are to consult new groups that may, don't make use of the arena at present, but are aware of the situation that might come forward, that maybe there are particular needs that we are not even thinking of at this current, current time and the analysis can specify this. That's a small amount, given the major amount that is called upon to be invested in this. If we are cognizant of the fact that we did what we could to do what needed to be done, and that's no problem. Do we have someone to second this motion? Counselor Grimaud? Other questions? All those in favor? Carry? With regards to the eight point nine million dollars that suggested with regards to, you know, concerning renovation, well, we've come up with the necessary money. I believe that what we're saying is this, Mr. Mayor, let's make use of this money for future development. If we decide to expand the surface, we'll always have this expertise in any event, we'll, we're going to be saving fifty-five thousand dollars as Miss Counselor Bellanguet has stated. It's going to cost us a lot of money to remodel this area as things stand now. We're saving money on a long-term basis. How about the health and safety aspect of things? Well, we have to take, consider future use. All those in favor then? Carry. Award for contract for the storm water master plan. Mrs. Simard? Be resolved that council adopt by law two thousand and eighteen dash sixty to authorize the mayor of the city to sign a contract with the W S P group for the extension of the storm water master plan in the amount of a hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and forty-three excluding H S T. And be it resolved that council authorizes the infrastructure and planning department to manage the provincial items for a maximum amount at forty thousand dollars. Seconded by Counselor Grimaud. Any questions? Counselor Grimaud? I would like to know, we're recommended to, we recommend to go along with W S P at a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Tatem came in second with a two point, two point difference, which is ten, and came in at fifty thousand dollars under the W S P group. Why do we decide to do away with our tender policy? There's only a two point two difference. We could say, difference, we could save fifty-five thousand dollars at least. I'd like to obtain explanations as to this. Well, Mr. Mayor, in fact, the process calls upon a combination of points and price and both lead to a grand total. And when we eliminate, when we take a look at the point system with regards to competency and price, price is equal to a certain percentage. So if you were to tell me that we had even, even a higher price at a certain point in time, and I know that things balance out, but they could increase their price to a certain extent, we could, we'd be obliged to take them in any event. Well, the way in which the tender was drawn up makes it that we're looking at the efficiency and competence and experience. There's, but there's a great deal of discrepancy because W S P has a great deal more competence in this field. Well, we're talking about a four point one difference from a technical aspect. That's right. Mr. Keough? Mr. Mayor, that's the difference between a request for proposal and a tender per se. This is a request for proposal and there's a point system that's awarded for the price and there's a point system also that's awarded to the R S P aspect of things. That's the difference between the two and we have to choose that firm that comes up with the highest percentage or the highest points number. Well, I move. Look, I think that for a difference of fifty thousand dollars with regard to a storm water system, I, I would be in favor of risking a loss, risking fifty-five thousand dollars. I know that you need to be competent to deal with storm water. I'm going to vote against this. Counselor Lallon? I'd like to obtain information concerning the point system as applied to item ten. The C A T E M company is much higher than the other company that was chosen and I'm in agreement with Counselor Grimaud. Well, however, Mr. Mayor, the points allocated to the price is lower than the point system or the percentage allotted to the major, to the overall points system. There's not all that great of a percentage difference to, with regard to all the... There's not all that great of a percentage difference to, with regard to all those that tendered, but there's a difference of $50,000 in this instance. I agree, I agree though, that discrepancy between five points from a technical aspect versus the discrepancy of $50,000 is much higher in the impact in between the technical points allotted. Well, what will WSB give us more for $50,000 than Tatum would? Well, they have a team that has greater competency. They've been involved in similar type projects for other municipalities. We're dealing with a consultant that drew up the tender document that was part of the assessment team. So this is not just an opinion shared by one or two individuals, by a team, but by a team of individuals. I'm sorry, there is $52,000 difference. Councillor Levert? Now, the Tatum company did not de-talk about any projects that they were involved with of a similar nature? Well, not in our area. Well, are you telling me that similar type projects conducted in other areas other than ours are not in? Well, I understand that storm water, storm water is a particular issue, but Tatum has worked for Toronto area-based municipalities, and there's a great deal of discrepancy between Toronto area cities than our city. Our needs are much different. Now, the selection committee thought that WSB was more representative of our needs. The extras are higher for Tatum, are they not though? Well, there are other things to assess. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are some provisional items. Now, we had needed to take those into consideration, those provisional items, when you took a look at other companies involved, they had a unit price that was much higher than this one. There's a $40,000, there's a $40,000 item worth of provisional items that was much higher. Councillor Chouagnier? We had a resolution that compelled us to adopt a point system, and I believe that if we revisit that point system where we were initially in agreement with those criteria that allowed us to assess performance, while we were taking a look at extras at 200, 200, 600, and Tatum was much higher. Well, you see, there's a $50,000 difference. We can come up with 20 other smaller projects to balance things out. I don't criticize your system, but we have a responsibility to be fiscally responsible. I believe that $50,000, if Tatum was involved in other projects, they're not involved in their first storm water project when they're tendering with this for this one here. Councillor Levert? I'm in turn in agreement, and again, the last meeting, we split hairs in half to try to come up with money elsewhere, and now we came up with a $50,000 amount that we're, we could obtain elsewhere. We might, you know, succeed in cutting 30, 40,000 initially when all things are said and done. I agree with Councillor Grimal that we can try out with the lower tender, but according to me, they made a mistake. The selection committee made a mistake. There's a possibility that we might approach them, and they'll try to come out of the, get out of the contract. Tatum, I'm sure, made a, my inkling is that they made a mistake. Well, there's one part of the contract that is certain, and there's another part that's provisional, where there's uncertainty. That's where there was a great deal of discrepancy. We asked for a minimum maximum of 40% to manage this discrepancy. And then we have a unit price that does apply, that is over and beyond, much higher than WSB's bid. And each unknown element or item might come up. What you're saying is that Tatum is unable to perform what needs to be done, given the extra costs with the $40,000 additional cost. If there was a choice, we should opt for double USP, given $50,000 more that it would cost us. Well, because there are some unknowns involved in working with our storm water system, it's quite probable that there are some unknown things that might call upon us to dip into our provisional item budget. Therein lies the difference between double USP and other firms, and also, given that they're more competent or they have more experience. We estimated 40,000 would be the maximum allowable limit for unforeseen circumstances, but because those are items that we're not aware of, because we're uncertain with regard to this network. Now, with them, with WSB, we have a $50,000 cushion at least. Mr. Keough?
...process, that it was open and fair, transparent process. The winner is who's being recommended. Council has the opportunity to choose who they would like, but if you choose somebody other than the one that had the most pointed, the most points, you will be, we could be subject to litigation from, from the, from the other party.
Well, I would propose that we take a more serious look at the price being tendered, because at present we are in need of money. Well, as Mr. Keough has said, we can be sued because we relied on the point system to make a choice. And the technical points total put the WSB company at a greater advantage than other competitors. So I'm just asking, who's in favor of the contract, of awarding contract to WSB, of awarding that contract? Well, we were told that we have a choice, but in fact, we don't have a choice, do we? Why does it come up to council for discussion? Why don't we just say, let's rubber stamp and that's it? Well, can we proceed to a vote, Mr. Mayor? Let me just explain things there, old, but we can't. The call to tender was already, was already done. Now, we've already gone through the procedures. We can, I'm in agreement with Mr. Grimal on this, Mr. Mayor. It's because we enacted a resolution beforehand stating that we were going to tender, and when we enacted this resolution to go to tender, that we ought to have asked or specified which criteria would have been considered as being more important. Who's in favor? Let's call a vote, let's call a vote? Well, it's money stemming from the budget. I'd call for a registered vote on this, Mr. Mayor. A registered vote is requested by Councillor LaLonde. Monsieur Levert in favor? Mrs. Simard in favor? Councillor Chouagnier in favor? Councillor Grimal opposed? Councillor Zant opposed? Councillor LaLonde opposed? Four, I guess four, and I'm in favor. I don't, I don't want to wind up in front of the courts here. The thing being, we can ask to modify the resolution that would be more in line with what you're thinking. Mrs. Collier had a point to make.
...explain that these reports come to council because it's the way our bylaw is structured. The council has to approve items that have gone to tender, and we're coming back to you to show the results of the tender, and you're then authorizing the clerk and the mayor to go and sign the agreement. It's not necessarily to make an amendment. It's really information for you. You're then giving us the...
But do you understand that we're responsible to spend the money as wisely? Balancing competencies and price, I think there's a big gap. Not a big gap, but there is a gap that we could probably improve where if the price is a bit higher, or like, you know, or it's lower, do you understand what I'm saying? Because we're talking $50,000 on a $200,000 project, that's 25%.
Sometimes they go low, but then there are so many things unpredictable that this is what they get you after, show you like...
Could it be wise to change the price pointage for the price to 20 points instead of 10?
Mr. Mayor, depending on the type of project, so our manager of supply will check with the other agencies and we, and his other counterparts in other cities, if we try to use a similar approach, we'll get consultants that'll advise us in terms of the weighting of the point, of pointage. Depending on the type of project, it could be a highly technical project, where you're going to put more emphasis there, less, less on, you always have some on price, but less on price. So it's really based on, and if staff are not experts in what they're going out to buy, they will get a consultant to advise them on the pointage structure, but it's always based on a risk between technical and financial.
Okay. Thanks.
Let's go on now to the next item, dispute resolution technique, dealing with the Brigil Yes, whereas an appeal to the local planning appeal tribunal, the LPAT, was received by, yes, that's right, that's the right one, was received by a resident in regards to the Brigil draft plan of subdivision and zoning by law amendment. It resolved that council agrees to use a dispute resolution technique to adopt their, to attempt to resolve the appeal. Seconded by Councillor LaLonde, questions? Councillor Belleguet? Which project are we dealing with here? The Brigil project up at top there of the hill, you know, the one close to Walmart, right up top of the hill, Pupar and, but what's the complaint? Well, there's someone in, that doesn't agree with what has been decided, if I understand. Well, you see, this is the new appeal system, remember? We were given a presentation as to that. You recommended that we make use of this new appeal procedure. You see, if we recommend that you follow this new appeal system, then that's fine. If not, we'll be required to make a separate application to another committee, and this application has very rigorous conditions attached to it if we go forward, and the OMPAC board will recommend that council go to mediation. So essentially, we'll wind up in the same situation. It's just to avoid, it's, chances are that it'll cost less and we'll obtain better, much more positive resolution, much more positive resolution. Let's go on to the next item, entrance of arena. It resolved that the temporary closure of the arena entrance be undertaken only once industrial street is enlarged and the De La Berge or De La Berge Street turning radius is adequate. Seconded by Councillor LaLonde, any questions? Councillor Grimal? It seems to me that we're shuttling the intersection problem that we've encountered to La Berge. It was an entrance that was completely functional, that ought to have been dealt with differently. All those people attending the Clarence Rockland complex will now be called upon to drive through a residential area, and I'm not sure that all residents are unaware of this. There's a La Berge Street that will lead, the La Berge Street stretch that will lead onto the arena. If I was a resident in that area, I'm sure that I would not have been made aware that it was an entrance leading onto the complex. Now, we're told that the people will go through residential area to go to the arena. We do have an entrance that is not all that surfable, that can be used right now. La Berge will yield the same results, but there are some turning lanes on La Berge. Well, even though there are some turning lanes, and if you proceed easterly and you turn left on a, to go to the arena, that's where accidents occur. But La Berge has a turning line and a lane, and a lane that goes around that turning line, lane. But what's going to happen afterwards, Mr. Mayor? When we widen at the back to get on into that bicarbonate, yeah, that industrial area, but again, there is not a turning lane there to allow you to turn there. So you're in the process of telling me that all traffic eventually will be called upon to drive through industrielle. There are lights. Yes, I know there are lights, but let me finish my point. Why do we decide to come up with an entrance on La Berge? Well, La Berge is there. My question is this, Mr. Mayor. If everyone can be compelled to drive through an industrial rather than a residential area to get to the arena, why don't we do so? Mr. Leonard? Well, Mr. Mayor, the entrance of La Berge had been widened, and there's a study that demonstrated the impact that the arena, that the study with regard to the arena had borne out. There will be an installation, the installation of a traffic light that will ensure the permanent closure of the opening, of existing openings. So there ought to be two access, two accesses to the arena, much more secure than, or much safer than there are at present. So there won't be a traffic light at the entrance? Well, you still have a problem with the width of the turn radius. Well, I'm wondering if we should ask the residents in phase one that they were aware, when they purchased their property, that there was going to be additional traffic through the residential area? Well, I'm wondering if we're not going to come up with the same situation, even if we reposition the traffic lights to another area at the other end? Well, counties wanted to have a four-liner in that area, and we were, we asked an exception to have only two lanes there. The county doesn't even maintain this entranceway, so. At present, Mr. Mayor, I, I think that there should be a school that will be built in that area, maybe not this year, but in coming years. There is going to be a fair amount of traffic in that area, I do understand. We do understand that those people that purchased close to La Berge will have an increase of, in traffic of their area, there'll be a school there, but there won't be an entrance or an exit off and into the highway. We're going to, we should encourage people to go through industrielle, it's going to be the better choice. There's already a existing entrance there, and I make use of it myself. And there were, people involved were aware of this. I just want to make sure that it's going to cost us $250,000, you know, to close down this existing facility. Yes, you know, this question of sharing, I don't think is something that is to be determined by court of law. You know, to put in two cement blocks saying, you know, you're going that way or that way, and let's talk about this in a couple of years to re-enroll, let's revisit the situation. I certainly would be reluctant in spending 200,000 or 300,000 as to this. Councillor LaLonde? If I take a look at this resolution, we're not compelled to close the existing entrance until such time as we widen industrial street, but they're in the process of doing so now. Industrielle, industrielle street, industrial street. Yes, yes, that's what we're talking about here. Well, that last bit of stretch of industrielle needs to be widened, but we need to indicate properly that this is the main entrance leading onto the arena. All those in favor? Carried then, thank you. Let's go on now to the Chemin La Coche grant of a contract and replacement of a culvert. Yes, it resolved that council adopt bylaw, oh, I'm sorry, I'm, yes, adopt bylaw 2018-64 to authorize the mayor and the clerk to enter into a signed contract with our in co-construction and excavation division of 1351, 150, Ontario Inc. to proceed to a stabilize, to stabilization work and the installation of a culvert for a sum of $541,002 excluding HST. It resolved also that council make an exception to the procurement policy in order to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign a contract with STANTEC for the administration and supervision during the construction on La Caserole for the amount of $70,329 excluding HST. Seconded by Councillor Belleguet, questions? Yes, I'd have a question. I assume that we don't have the knowledge at the departmental level to offset the $70,000 expenditure. I'm just ensuring that if we had internal comp knowledge to do this, we could save or salvage $70,000 with regard to supervision work to be performed. But we're going to be building a, paying a firm $70,000 to supervise the building of a culvert. It's not a question of supervision, but also of competency, Mr. Mayor, and the number of capital expenditure projects that we're involved in. So they don't, they not only have a role to supervise, but also they're, they have a role to manage and supervise the projects. This is the way of going about doing things. That represents the 13% of installation costs, that's quite competitive, it's quite competitive really. But if we have, we're involved in a lot of project, and it costs us about $300,000 per year, why don't we hire another employee at a salary slightly lower? And I'm not saying that things will change, but even if we hire a contractual employee to handle those more important... to handle those more important matters, it could reduce our expenditures. When we add those 13 called for expenditures together, and we get involved in project management while we hire external help or outside help for supervising such work, it costs us quite a lot, but if we rely on our internal mechanism, well, or internal knowledge, it would certainly help us out. I don't know how much it costs us to oversee projects, certainly when we call upon outside firms to do so, but that amount of money we're dealing with right now, $70,000 just for this project, would cover the salary of a full-time employee that will oversee this. We're not just talking about competency here, but there are a lot of projects, whereas there are a lot of projects that are involved. You know, when we are relying on the expertise of given employees that hire over 1,000 employees or different firms, they have the manpower to oversee the project.
16 capital budget, we have a lot of projects that we're, we were behind on, and we contracted to have a firm help us get caught up. We have over 100 projects when you count all the projects that we still have on the books. So I will sit with Mr. Leonard, and we'll look at how much we've had to contract out and see if your suggestion makes sense in terms of who we need and what we need to hire, and we'll present something back to you at budget.
I think if a firm is competent to supply, and I understand some policies are different from project to project.
Yeah.
It's a very valid point. But if we can contract a firm to look after, and if we can save money, I just find it worth at least look at it. And I know we're in a very busy period, we're catching up with the roads and the small bridges and the culverts, but, I mean, just one project, 70 grand right there, and that's not a huge project, let's talk about water looping. That's another one.
But another additional employee means that we need to pay the benefits, need to pay all the, and you have to pay persons for...
I'd like to see the numbers, maybe it would be worth it.
But also depending, normally the firms, they have specialties, like one would be dealing with bridges, and then another one, so they get very competent in their field. So we, I would think that the expertise would be higher than when you have a choice of over 30 employees.
Maybe you come back with a report when I'm calling, and give us some information, just see what you can do.
Just a small question. Now, the culvert that we're dealing with, is this the one located north of Lacoste that you'll be changing? No, that's the culvert located not too far from ongoing works right now, roadwork to the north-south, you know, in the dip, in that dip area. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. All right, let's go on now to an easement agreement for 1325 Lacoste. Councilor La Lande, bit resolved that council adopt a balla 2018-63, being a balla that authorizes the mayor and the clerk of the Corporation of the City of Clarence Rockland to sign an easement agreement with the owner of 1325 Lacoste Road for the preliminary engineering work required for Lacoste Road. Seconded by Councilor Belanguet, any questions? All those in favor? Carrie, then, thank you. Can we not do this free of charge? No, we need to come up with a $500 cash outlay, that's to cover lawyers' fees. Mr. Mueller was quite accommodating for, in this particular instance. Let's go on now to the 2017 end-of-year report. Councilor Belanguet? Bit resolved that report number FIN 2017-014 be received as information, and bit resolved that council authorizes the transfer of $211,590 from the tax stabilization reserve to apply against the general accumulated surplus deficit. Seconded by Councilor Zant, questions? Councilor Grimal? How much is left in the tax stabilization fund after this? Well, given the report, money available as of today, and that takes into account not all the money that has been spent, but that amount that was reflected, how much money do we put into the budget? Well, we put in $0. Is it because we never made use of this? Well, you, just to explain how the mechanism works, basically, you know, depending if we have a surplus, the surplus money goes into accumulated, the accumulated surplus fund, and this is the first fund, if there's a deficit that we dip into to obtain money. As was readily noticed this year, we exhausted the funds in this reserve. That's when we dip in then to the tax stabilization fund, reserve fund. And this was created stemming from the La Rose United Counties Prescott Russell Initiative. I can't recall exactly the exact number, but I believe we had about $1.1 million that was set aside, and that's the fund that we're dipping into, and there's about $479,000 left in that without or including this payment, including this payment. So we have about $470,000 left. And to make matters clear, next year, if we were to incur another deficit, we had no accumulated surplus, we have to immediately dip into the tax stabilization reserve fund then. Councilor La Lande, is the transfer caused by a deficit that was incurred during the fiscal year? Yes, well, for example, we went through, don't forget that we incurred a lot of costs with regard to the flood last year, yes. All those in favor, then? Carrie? Financial statements? Presentation of the financial statements? Good evening, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilors and Mr. Mayor, let me start off with the report that has a streetlight on Page one, our audit is concluded, and we'll have a letter of intent signed by town administration. If you do approve, of course, the financial statements tonight, we'll perform a final review subsequent to the end of work performed, along with our administrators and your legal representatives, and we'll review the actual report stemming from the USIB Ontario. And so it could be that we've received the latest bit of information that we required this week, or if not, at the beginning of next week, and also to approve the financial statements. Second point I'd like to touch upon is that on page five, we submit to you the same letter. BDO is an independent firm, independent of the municipality, and the threshold this year is set at $750,000. We make use of industry-related standards representing about 2% of the income. Dealing with the audit results, all discrepancies that were noted were adjusted, with the exception of two discrepancies that correspond really to mistakes made last year that are detailed on page nine. Well, two mistakes, well, that were offset. One was an income amount that was applied in 2017, but ought to have been applicable in 2016, $40,000. And there was also a grant that was applicable for 2016 that had not been registered in the amount of $40,000. So the net amount is $2,961. That's the discrepancy that would be favorable with regards to financial statements this year, extremely favorable as opposed to the $750,000 threshold imposed upon us. And with regards to civil liability, as stated earlier on, we confirmed with your lawyers that at present, all actions that the town is involved in have been dealt with or have been dealt with by your insurance carrier. So at present, there are no liabilities to financial statements for any court actions that you would be involved into. Page three, of course, we have to go through certain processes to determine whether there had been fraud at the municipal level, and we, we asked town administration to indicate to us whether there had been any instances of frauds, and it was indicated to us that there were no incidents of fraud, and, and we're asked you also if you, as members of town council, were aware of any instances of fraud during the course of the year? If there had been some, I imagine you would not have divulged this to me immediately, but if there had been some, I would urge you to come, contact me immediately and make me aware of this. Now, page four, with regards to internal control mechanisms applicable. We take a look at some control mechanisms and not control mechanisms that apply to the whole of the municipal operations. We didn't come up with any deficient control mechanisms, and we came up with a statement letter, page eight, and we stated that during the preparation of the budget and the accounting of certain, like, certain expenditures, there are certain expenditures that are budgeted under operational costs and under capital expenditure costs, and where by the actual expenditures ought to be journaled under different journal entries. We make use of the budget usually that is adopted by council, so as an example, if you put down expenditure under road allowances, now, within the framework of operational expenditures, it's an actual expenditure, and the budget will deal with that expenditure, let's say, in the amount of $300,000 with no offsetting equivalencies. It would give you a false reading that you're under budget. And we invite you to take a look at our website also to obtain more information. We, in page one, first paragraph, audit status. It states here that these elements will need to be completed before our final audit statement be, with regards to consolidate, the consolidated statement will be, will be delivered to council. Are you still missing some information? Well, let's just say that item two and item five, for example, this would be applicable to both of those cases. It's just a question of timing. We can't issue our report before you adopt the report. You'll note that the report is not yet dated, does not have a date to it. If you refer to page one, two, let me see here, page four of the financial statement. The report remains unsigned. We cannot sign your report unless, until such time as you adopt it. And we can't determine the date of the adoption of the report. We can't guess when you will adopt the report before we know the report has been adopted, but we have a resolution now. When you do adopt the report, then we perform a final verification, and we contact your lawyer, we read the minutes following the last time we met, let's say, the 27th of April, and we'll take, read the minutes in between the 27th of April and the 5th of May. We probably won't come up with anything, but it's a standardized way of doing things. It's finalized at 99.8%, to the tune of 99.8%, but we still need that 0.2% to finalize it. But it states that as of this date, we've nearly completed our audit of financial statements for the fiscal year ended. But has the fiscal year ended? As of the preparation of this particular report, you forward it to us tonight? Well, when you do approve, I need to do a few other things after you've approved it, but I can't do anything before you approve those documents. Now, the threshold is at $750,000. Are we dealing with deficits here? No, no, we're not talking about deficits, deficits. Now, the threshold that I'm alluding to is an amount that we make use of to sample what needs to be looked into. This amount really says the following: For someone that reads the financial statements, when he or she takes a look at, let's say, a $750,000 expenditure and compared to $130 million total asset package or total income package, and you have, let's say, a $37 million subsidiary income package, and if there are mistakes, it wouldn't change the financial picture. Of course, if I told you tomorrow that you have $750,000 worth of surplus for you, that would be important, but from a financial, a general financial picture, it wouldn't change all that much. Even if your surplus is $130 million or $129 million, the bank, when it looks at your consolidated financial statement, will not change its position vis-à-vis its lending practices to you. It's a way within our industry to determine, I told you earlier on, I alluded to two non-adjusted mistakes. Sometimes, we might think that there is a mistake, but town administration might not be in agreement with this, or they're not in agreement with entering into different accounting procedures to offset those, and we, we, let's say, that it would differ from our approach, that impacts our way of looking at things. And then the other financial statement that you'll be asked to review, yes, we're taking to a different, we're making use of a different philosophy. Let's go on now to page six. Page six, all right then, page six. So, income and expenditures for fiscal year ended 31st of December 2017. With regards to taxes, you had accumulated an amount of $18 million, an increase of 2.16% in the rate, an increase in the assessment of 1.97%, which totals, which gives us an increase of approximately 1.7%. User fees decreased from 14 to 13 million dollars. Last year, there was an adjustment of an amount receivable from CIH of about $1.4 million that had increased the income in 2016, and this income item is not dealt with anymore. Now, construction permits are increased by some $200,000, and you have less income with regards to public transit of, to the tune of $86,000. Now, transfer payments, the federal government, 82,416 last year. The major amount of the federal transfer payments relate to gas tax income, and it depends if we're under or over that threshold. If it's over, you make use of capital expenditures or operational expenditures. Now, last year, there was a bit more to the gas tax funnel to operational expenditures. That's why you wind up with a $96,000 amount. If you take a look at the bottom, the federal payment is 198,000 as compared to 189,000. I know that there's a difference there, but the discrepancy is not as high. That's at page six, right? Right up on top, I see, up on top. Province of Ontario, total income and grants, $2,147,000. Variation, the discrepancy is, deals mainly with the grant that you received or ought to receive to compensate for flood relief. Other municipalities, $2,400,000, and the major amount there deals with daycare centers, 1.7 million. Other expenditures, 2.7 million, for a total of 37.6 million with regards to municipal Public safety, it takes into account flood fees, $710,000 worth of expenditures, firefighter salaries increased by some $248,000, and there's an estimate for future possibilities concerning the WSIB. Let me explain this. At present, there's an amount that you're called upon to pay. The WSIB forwards you an estimate as to the possibility that there may be some other cases dealing with firefighters, let's say that would fall prey to cancer, for example. So this amount, this account payable is much higher this year by some $161,000. Now, road transportation, $11,83,000. Environmental services, close to $8 million. Recreation and culture, $7,84,000 as compared to $8.2 million. The increase is with regards to salaries, social services and families, urban planning, $710,000 for a practical total of, practical, close to $41 million. Income, capital expenditures, Government of Canada. Expenditures, the gas tax, $800,000, that's the grant, $400,000, some odd thousand that come from the United Counties of Prescott Russell for the funding of capital expenditure-related projects, and you also have development fees. Variation as opposed to last year, the amount was negative last year, and in 2015... And in 2015, you'd made use of development fees to finance part of the Cairo Street project. And in 2016, you changed your mind, you decided to finance on a long-term basis this particular project. So you're, you paid back the development fees to the reserve fund to and made use of this amount to reimburse the loan that you entered into. So that amounted to an exercise deficit, related deficit of $749,000. You had an accumulated surplus of $1,243,000 and the surpluses, 100 is some $48,245. Let me give you an explanation as to note 11 this time around. I'd like to start at the bottom because we're dealing with the largest amount here and I work my way up. So the $130 million is made up of many amounts. The biggest amount is all of those amounts that you've invested in real estate or non-amortized, $147 million. You then deduct certain amounts that are un-financed or non-financed for which you haven't made use of taxpayers' amounts to offset those amounts. So assets that you've acquired or work that you've performed during the fiscal year or previous years that have not yet been financed, about $3 million worth. There are two major amounts, those sewers on Laurier Street for $3 million and St. Joseph Works on St. Joseph for 1.5 million. And non-financed future amounts, that's the W S I B amount that I alluded to, 1.6 million dollars. Long-term borrowings, $27 million. Long-term receivable amounts for some projects that you entered into and that you finance, waiting for taxpayers to reimburse you, 1.6 million dollars on a long-term basis. And un-financed operations, municipal drains that were done at the end of 2017 that will be reimbursed to ratepayers in 2018. And internal loans, instead of contracting external loans, you finance those internally, $841,000 from the... Now, let's go up to the top of the page, reserve funds, $7.3 million. And early on, a question was asked as to the stabilization reserve fund that was set up, 30th, as of the 31st of December, you had $634,000. It was decreased as opposed to last year. Frederick told you that you've incurred in the meantime or certain expenditures with regard to concerning certain decisions that you've taken, reserve funds, total of reserve funds and funds, $7.8 million. Surplus stemming from general taxation, Frederick had mentioned that it was at zero. Library is set at $81,000. Waterworks and storm sewer works, $1.8 million. And garbage pickup management, $137,000. Now, all of those amounts accumulated, total $15,354,000. Page six, recaps, basically what state of affairs is all about. That allows us to understand where we're heading. If I take a look at page six now. Let me see here. I noted that, oh, I'm sorry, if I take a look at figures appearing on page five, I apologize. If I take a look at, just keep your question for later on because I'll revisit page five. All right. Councilor Bellincket, on page six, for example, sir, I note that there are major differences in between the 2017 budget and the 2017 actual figures. One of the major ones, major differences, public safety, we had $6.4 million budgeted and it cost over and above $7.4 million. And that's because of the flood. And also salary adjustments are involved in that, right? So it cost us much more than initially forecast for 2017. Did we, were we made aware of that when we prepared the 2018 budget? Were we made aware of that? Well, in fact, our flooding concerns are not the same this year, but this with regards to salaries, it's already budgeted in the 2018 budget. Do you know what public safety, the public safety budget is for 2018? Well, I don't have the exact amount at present, but I could certainly look into that for you, but the budgeted amount would be, yes. Any other questions? Now, given the flood-related expenditures cost us 500 or $700,000, but we did receive 500 and some odd thousand dollars. Now, it would have cost us a bit more, 200 and some odd thousand dollars to offset the loss. Yes. You know, so, saving apart from that, maybe you might explain to me then, sir, exactly the close to $800,000 deficit that we've incurred. It was caused, we don't, we know it was only solely, it was not solely caused by the flood. We know that. But we've wound up with a $200,000 difference, 500, given the United Counties grant that we received, Mr. Mayor. Well, you see, that combines a whole lot of things. And if you take a look at the $789,000 figure, now, there are two things, two elements to be taken into account. The 200,000 earlier on that was alluded to by Frederick, that's the 200, you know, when you're preparing your budget, for example, and a financial statement, it's not exactly 100% on the same basis that you're preparing those. A major difference, and let me identify two of those. When you're preparing your budget, there's no amortization provisions taken into account. But capital expenditures, for example, that you'll enter into that are un-financed will be deemed automatically as an expenditure and the long-term payments on the long-term debt will be deemed as an expenditure. But when we're preparing the financial statement, we have to rely on a particular accounting basis. There are some things that are not perfectly identical when we do so. As an example, amortization, for example, is not a component that appears there. That represents 6 point some odd million dollars. If you take a look at note 12, at the contents of note 12 of my report, comment 12 if you wish. See, we've made use of your budget that it has a zero balance and at the end, if we make apply an adjustment, well, you've budgeted a surplus of 2.6 million dollars that is reflected in the 2017 budget. So 2.6 million dollars surplus, that's right, minus a deficit, that's right, which is shown on page six. I have difficulty understanding something here, Mr. Mayor. We'd ask town administration to come back to us with financial statements, I believe, four times per year at each quarter in any event. We had, we'd entered into this discussion with town administration. Now, at the end of May, we wind up with a $780,000 deficit right now, and it seems as if, you know, it's all right. It's like common practice. I don't understand. I do not understand. Mr. Keel?
We've spoken about this during the budget, that we have a modified cash basis of preparing our budget, which many municipalities do. Municipalities have been required to report on their financial statements on an accrual basis, depre... Today, 2010? Like since about 2010? So our budgeting is not on an accrual basis yet. We want to get there. It's a lot more complicated and, but it is something we are looking at doing because yes, I agree with you. We do a budget on modified cash basis. We do quarterly reporting to you on a modified cash basis and then we do a financial statement at the end of the year. But that's why if you look at Frederick's report, which is the one that you approved previously, he had in, in the financial statement, he showed you what the deficit is on a accrual basis and what it is on a cash basis. So you can see those two, those two amounts and he explains exactly as the auditor did what the differences are. And most of it is related to depreciation of your assets, which is a non-cash concept, but on an accrual accounting basis, a very important concept. So, Mr. Mayor, this is something that will be over the next few years, it'll be evolving into this modified cash budgeting, into a more accrual accounting budgeting process.
Any other questions? If you don't have further questions, let's go on to page five. Five is your statement as it stands as of the 31st of December, assets and liabilities. You had close to $13 million in the bank, taxes receivable, $3.2 million. About two years ago, I had certain questions with regards to taxes still to be paid and you've taken some measures now to accelerate reimbursement. You've noticed that there was a decrease of close to $600,000 of taxes receivable, user charges receivable, water sewers, $1.3 million, other costs receivable, $2.1 million, and long-term receivables, $6 million. Those are amounts that are paid on an annual basis. That's going to reduce things until there's major projects that are financed on a long-term basis. So your liabilities, total 28.6 million, or 25.1 million. Now, with regards to accounts payable and accrued liabilities, $6.8 million. Deposits, close to $1.9 million, and the deferred revenue, $5.9 million, most of which is made up of construction fees. Net long-term liabilities, $27.7 million, so 42.4 million. Net, well, net debt would be $17,300,000, $320,000. Non-financial assets, $147 million. And prepaid expenditures, $123,000. Inventory, $210,000. If you take a look at page seven, you have close to $8 million in acquisition and to balance that out, you have close to $7.2 million worth of amortization. That's why amounts increased. And if you take a look at page 16, for example, you'll note different acquisitions and amortizations as applied to different categories and the major part of acquisitions deal with roads, $1.5 million of asphalt, $710,000, I believe, applied to the Bouleau Street Bridge, or Bouleau Stridge Bridge, $310,000 for Sterling Sewers, $717,000 for Sterling Street Infrastructure, for example, water. The water system, major part, was taken up by Sterling. Acquisition of trucks, grader, a tractor, a snow blower that made up the majority of the amount stated there. Any questions with regard to what appears on page five? So what you're telling us is this, and it's important for residents to understand this, is that our total debt for the city right now would be $17,320,000, taking into account assets and liabilities. Well, the net debt can be pointed with regards to your actual finance, financial assets as opposed to liabilities. But if you were to take a look at a normal financial statement, you would have to add your $147 million worth of assets at the bottom. So you wind up with an amount of 145 plus 25, 172,000 assets as opposed to $47 million worth of liabilities that would give you a sizable increase. So you have all of the details of the borrowings also that you've entered into. I see. And on a long-term basis, you have a $27 million amount, yes. So you're in good financial position, excellent financial position. Any other questions? No, that's it then. Well, thank you very much. Fine then. Do you have anything else to add? No, that's fine. No, that's it for me. Do we have anything else to deal with? Oh, there's one thing that I noted there, page 395, page 12, or item 395, page 12. Capital reimbursements spread out over the next five years. There's an amount set down that comes up, that arrives at a total of $3.7 million. But last year, we had $20,997,000. I think you're mixing up the note of long-term debtors as opposed to long-term assets. I think, well, long-term liabilities was at $8.6 million. So you're mistaken as to your review of numbers here. I believe our salaries increased by some $900,000, yes? Page eight reflects this difference, salaries, materials, et cetera. And yes, the increase in salary is close to $1 million at present. Now, currently, we're talking about 25% of our total budget earmarked for salaries and benefits, $970,080 more than last, more paid out in salaries this year as opposed to last year. Quite true, quite true. Well, fine then. I'll phone you up if I have any other questions. No problem, I'm available for you. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven other matters I'd like to take up with you. Fine. All those in favor then? All those in favor? I was going to ask you to come by, Mr. Don, and visit me. I'll certainly help you out with that. No problem. Okay. I know you're a busy man. We all are, that's fine. All those in favor now of adopting the financial statements? Did you have a resolution to read out? Resolve that Town Council adopt the financial statements of the City of Clarence and Rockland as prepared by the B D O Canada Company for the fiscal year ending 31st of December 2017 as recommended, seconded by Councilor Bellincket. All those in favor? Carrie then, thank you. Accounts paid, Mr. Bellincket, be resolved that accounts paid for the amount from the 7th of April 2018 to the 11th of May 2018, the amount of $2,807,000 be adopted as recommended, seconded by Councilor Seymour. Any questions? Yes, Councilor Grimar? I have the information before me, but it's in small type. Line 42, site information, roadside information, what I can see as a description for an amount of $6,900 bike light sets or light sets. We purchased 1,620 lights, yes. We purchased those LED lights and will be distributing those lights throughout the different school boards. This is a grant that we've received and this is, the City of Clarence and Rockland, Clarence and Rockland does not pay out for any of those. We've received this for the benefit of children. You're the first ones to know about this tonight. Well, well, don't forget, Councilor Grimar, that this is earmarked also for Saint Pascal's ratepayers, yes. Just a question, dealing with our fire chief. There are three courses that were offered. We're talking about $1,130 for firefighters to attend those courses, lines 48, 49, and 39. Yes, those are, those three courses offered to our bylaw enforcement officers. Those are training courses. Where were they offered?
The National Fire Chiefs Association. They're held at the Ontario Fire College in Great Lakes, but they're not subsidized at all as some other courses are. So we have to pay our fair share, that's the course cost per officer to send them on that train.
Was taken within the honorable area?
There's no courses offered in our area, aside from potentially offering.
Thank you, I got the answer.
Any other questions then? All those in favor? Carrie then, thank you. Bylaws, is there, are there any bylaws you'd like to withdraw? Which ones? No, no, I'm just, none. So please read them, Councilor Grimar. With great pleasure, Mr. Mayor. Resolve that the following bylaws be adopted. Bylaw 2018-61 to provide for the conveyance of land for park or other recreational purposes and 2018-62 to sign a contract with no tracks for the purchase of a front end loader, seconded by Councilor Joanne Schoeney. All those in favor, thank you. Confirm a Tory bylaw, be resolved that bylaw 2018-66B deemed a confirmed Tory bylaw for the regular meeting of Town Council 23rd of May 2018, that it be adopted, seconded by Councilor Schoeney. All those in favor? Adjournment called at 10:17 PM. Well, well, if you have something to do, go and do that little thing quickly because we're starting the regular meeting of Town Council immediately afterward. the regular meeting of town council immediately afterwards. We have other items to determine, to speak, yes, we'll deal with those later.